Welcome to the school committee meeting of July 22nd, 2019. Mike?
Yeah.
I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is being broadcast live and is also being recorded for use at a later date if needed, so please keep that in mind. I'd ask you to please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Would you also please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming. Justin, thank you. You can see we have a large gallery tonight, you and Trace. It's all good. Okay, every year we voted to appoint a school physician and entertain a motion to appoint Dr. David Belcher as a school physician for the 2019-2020 school year.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Fred?
Did he do it last year as well?
Yes.
We do it every year.
No, no, this particular doctor.
Yeah.
David.
Oh, do you mean the same guy?
Yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry. We have to do it every year. And I was just going to say that it's a yearly appointment. We usually do it this time of the year, so. Any other discussion? All those in favor? unanimous, thank you. Also, we're going to hear a proposal to apply for membership to Social Education Collaborative effective for, it's too late for this year, but it's going to be effective for the 2021 year.
Fiscal 2021. So Lauren Mathis has been doing some work to see what we could potentially do for any kind of cost-saving to help our special education budget. Contacted South Shore Collaborative. We are not members of that, so we pay a non-member price for our students over there. Right now, currently, we have 12 students over there, and we are paying about between $4,000 and $5,000 more as a non-member for our students to go there. Our proposal with school committee endorsement is to become members of the collaborative. There's no cost to us. It'll probably be another meeting for me, or we're going to recommend Mr. Boyce be another collaborative person. But I think it's a good move on our part. There's no detriment, and if we can get a tuition break by being a member of their collaborative, it's well worth it as our, in our, as our future going forward. So right now, we, if, in this year, if it was to go in right now, we'd save close to $55,000 in fiscal '20. So fiscal '21, they meet as board of directors in October. That's their first board meeting. So with the recommendation this committee, we'll put it forth to their board. If they appoint or if they select us, it'll go for fiscal 2021.
Like to make a motion to join the collaborative?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Boyce.
So Jeff, do you know how many member towns they currently have?
Of the South Shore Collaborative?
Um, yeah.
I don't.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, I didn't, I want to do a little bit more research, but I thought it was excellent. How many students do we have attending?
12. We have 12. So, Mr. Boyce, the answer, I do have that. The collaborative serves Braintree, Cohasset, Hingham Hall, Marshfield, Milton, Norwell, Quincy, Randolph, Situate, Weymouth.
Awesome.
Fred?
Thank you.
Do they provide services at the set building, or is it throughout the different districts and we have the opportunity perhaps to host a program?
From what I understand, it's in their set building. They're located up off Derby Street, up where the, the South Shore Orthopedics is, in that industrial area.
It's a cut through. If you ever go from like the industrial area right out to Sports Center, Derby Streets, on that cut through.
They've never reached out, and I know most of these districts, I was a member when I was in Situate, we sent kids to the collaborative, they house it pretty much there. If there was ever a need for space, we could have that conversation, but I don't remember too many kids going outside of, of South Shore. Their specific, different collaboratives do different things for different kids. South Shore Education Collaborative really focuses on the social-emotional welfare of students. From some of the students that I've sent in the past, a lot of anxiety issues, eating disorder issues, that's their specialty. They're not a behavioral collaborative. North River Collaborative is our behavioral collaborative. They specialize in students with behavior plans. South Shore Ed does a little bit different with the social-emotional piece. So, being a member, I only see benefit to that, and they will provide PD as, as North River does for our teachers as well. So it's just a, it's a win-win for us, and my question to Lauren is, geez, why didn't we do this in the past? So she asked the question, and said, can you bring it to the committee now so we can get it on the agenda for the board in October?
It's a no-brainer in my mind.
Same services to the students.
Yes.
At a reduced price.
Any other questions?
Just by approving and joining.
Correct.
Yeah, and I can tag on to that, thank you. It is, that seems to be the basis for all of the budgeting that's put together is member and non-member, and sometimes your non-member enrollment is higher than some of your member enrollments. So with Pilgrimaria done, that's, and it's really neat, I mean, I love the way it's set up, state to 10 districts or towns, communities, and they all have a piece in the pie, and it's local, us as the local authority being at those, Jeff, for the North River Collaborative. But, yeah, it's definitely worth it.
Anyone else? Motion, second, excuse me. All those in favor? Okay, before we go to the last item on the agenda, I'm just going to give a couple quick reports. Important dates to remember, Monday through Thursday, August 19th through the 22nd is new teacher orientation. Monday, August 26th, all teachers and instructional aides report for professional development. Wednesday, August 28th, 2019, all students pre-K to 12 return back to school. Wednesday, August 28th, is a school committee meeting at 7:00 PM here in the library. And Monday, September 2nd, no school, Labor Day is observed. Also, when you pack it, if you look, you will see that we have some letters. One of them is from Rep. Cutler requesting aid increase for Chapter 70. And I'll quickly read it. Dear Chair Patient, Chair Lewis, thank you for continuing work on critical issue of education funding. As you and your committee members review requested proposed change for Chapter 70 foundation budget formula, I respectfully request that any legislation include a minimum floor of $50 per pupil aid. And then it goes on to explain a bunch of stuff that's going on in school districts and why he would like an increase. And that was from Cutler. Also, we had a letter from Superintendent, congratulations, we're pleased to inform you that Whitman-Hanson Regional School District has been awarded $60,000 for the Safer Schools and Communities Local Equipment and Technology Grant offered by the Executive Office of Public Safety and Securities Office of Grants and Research. Signed Charles Baker and Lieutenant Governor Karen Polito. And I believe both Allison Sullivan and Josh Cutler were very instrumental in getting that pushed through.
Both of their aides and them, they made countless phone calls trying to keep us up to date, and, because that was actually not run by DESI, it was run by the Department of Helping Human Security or Services, or, whole different department. So, but yes, they were both very helpful.
Executive Office of Public Safety and Security and of Grants and Research, so, not out of DESI.
Yep, so we will be giving a check back or not needing money for some of the projects that were approved at town meeting.
And last but not least, this is from Allison Sullivan, State Rep., 7th District, Plymouth. I respect, honorable conferees, I respectfully request that you increase the funding for regional school transportation to $75,856,506 dollars as adopted by the Senator in budget deliberations. And as a representative, having Whitman-Hanson Regional in my school district, I see firsthand the financial struggles that affect every regional school district across the Commonwealth. By increasing the regional transportation funding, we would greatly aid Whitman-Hanson Regional School District and every other regional school district across the Commonwealth while planning for their up-and-coming school years. Sincerely, Allison Sullivan. So, state reps are working very hard to try and get as much as they can for Whitman-Hanson, and they've been very successful, and it's not easy to do. If you ever go up to the State House, you will see that it's difficult. And also, Josh is on a minimum increase increment, as I said, no school districts will provide the same level of service after year while operating under such a fiscal constraint. The end result means cuts to school service or greater burden falling on local property taxes. And it goes on to explain the budget formula and all of the above. And ultimately, believes that we should move away from a strict dependence on enrollment data and provide all school districts across massive funding level, keeps pace annually with consensus revenue benchmarks, as we effectively do with unrestricted government aid. And the interim offering greater flexibility with state mandates and more budget-making tools such as the ability to charge, excuse me, non-residents for transportation costs will help alleviate this funding crunch. Again, thank you for your continuing work and kind considerations. Warmest regards, Josh Cutler. So we should be very proud of our state reps, they are working hard for us. Fred?
And, you know, Josh had been a champion trying to actually get the minimum pupil up to 100, as opposed to leaving it at 50. The conference committee finally came out with a budget last night, and I believe they voted on it today through the House and Senate and passed it on to the governor. Unfortunately, it did only contain the $30 minimum increase that were both in the House and Senate versions. His words unfortunately fell on deaf ears. But, on the good side, the Senate's version contained an 82.5% reimbursement for regional transportation, and that part was adopted. So now it's off to the governor, and we'll see what comes up from there. Other than that, I didn't see any major highlights or lowlights in what came out.
Okay. So thank you to both of our reps, they're working very hard, Senator Brady I know has been in there doing the same thing, so thanks to all three of them, hopefully maybe we'll get some better funding for Whitman-Hanson Regional School District. Last but not least, excuse me, on tonight's agenda is a budget discussion. Superintendent?
Leave the good one for me, right?
Of course.
So, what I'd like to do is give you a little bit of an update on where we are in fiscal '20, because we have some movement in fiscal '20 since we, we met in June. We had a resignation of a building principal. My hope is that we are, we will bring in an interim that will save us some money for fiscal '20 right, right up front. I don't assume the person's, I'm looking for a retired person, so the person's not going to come in at a principal salary. I was able to bring back a teacher to Conley School to reduce class size in the 5th grade. We had two resignations in the district, and by hiring low, we were able to bring back a full-time teacher for Conley, so there's no impact to the '20 budget except for reallocation of funds within the district. We have noticed, since the departures of the people who left the district in technology, one of the questions that was asked to me was, did the district actually lose people? Did we lose positions? We lost, after this brought back, we've down, we've lost 18 positions, one being the Director of Technology. We are uncovering a few things that will have financial impact to us in the future because some of our systems have, have been outdated and underserviced. We actually had a contractor come in today regarding our walkie-talkie system. That contractor has been looking to get into our district. We have a contract with them from the predecessor, Mr. Finley, years ago, and the contractor has been trying to get back in the system since to make sure we're utilizing our equipment appropriately. He met with George and the team today. We will have something moving forward. We've noticed, or we've been, we've uncovered that our phone system in the district is antiquated. Our answering services, our phone systems, need to be updated. I'll bring this to you forward, but I want you to just hear that. And another issue George is going to speak of is, we might have a financial cost in the district now because of some construction on Route 18 and Route 27. George?
Yeah, as you've seen, they're, they're moving the poles on 18 and 27 in Whitman. As a result of that, you remember seven to nine years ago, we put in our own fiber optic network, and we ran all our own wires on the poles so we could have the internet that we have. Well, as a result of, this is a mass DOT project headed by a man named Chris Sarah, who's the Mass DOT resident engineer. He is the person that has been in touch with all districts, all parts of town, and what's happening is, is they are putting, there'll be approximately, I think, 12 poles that are affected with our wires. And if you've, if you've noticed, it's by Marcello's, it's by Cumberland Farms, it's by that new car wash place, it's on 18 and 27. Our stretch is just on 27, and it's basically the fiber optic that runs from here through Conley and the Whitman Middle School. And what usually happens when you move a pole or if a pole comes down, is you have to go in order of the highest wire on the pole. So you go, let's call it electric, let's call it phone, let's call it Comcast, and then maybe where 4. And then you have to, in order, move these wires to the pole behind it. What we're finding with this is that, what, I'm learning a lot. What we're finding is, is that fiber optic is actually a glass, it's a glass cable. And as a result, there is not, there's differing opinions with the vendors we're seeing as to whether we have to go back to a splice point and run new, what would be looser wire because the distance between the poles is so far, or if there's some where we can just take the existing wire, pay for it to be moved when it's our turn on the pole, and put it on the new pole. There are three companies on the state bid list that we've been in touch with. One of them has already given us a proposal. That proposal would have financial impact for the district and probably the town if it's capital. The other two are coming out tomorrow. The three companies are State Electric, Sully Mac, and Spectrum Integrated. A lot of these people, it seems, it seems to me like it's National Basketball Association. One, coaches always stay around. These workers seem to always be around, but they work at different companies now. So some of the people, Sully Mac was the original person that did it for us when we did it seven years ago. A lot of those same people are now with the other two companies. So they're actually meeting tomorrow to see if we can get two other bids, because anything over, you know, we have to get a number of bids, so we're doing those three bids now. Basically, who's calling us back to move from there?
If they're on the state bid list, do we have to get, in other words, if they're already state-approved, like SJ Services is on the state bid list?
Correct.
Do we have to get competing bids?
Uh, we have to get, to my understanding, we have to get competing bids because one of the first ones is already at $35,000. So we'd have to put out for an RFP if it's over $50,000, but until said time it gets to that, it's at $35,000. Now, there's also a lot of talk with these vendors saying, well, that, you know, we'll check, we're on that bid, you know, we're on the original job, we're not sure, so I'd have more information neck, you know, next time or when it becomes available. But there is movement already with the other cable, not cable, the other wire vendors that are on the pole. So I just wanted to bring that up to you. And there's also difference of opinion as to what, in fact, what time of year, what year the person who ran the tech department was, was made aware of this.
Just letting the committee know, we found out the 28th of June. So I would have brought this to you early on, till we found out the 28th of June. So we've been scrambling to make sure that the department is intact, and these things are coming up. So as we go through the, this new school year, you will probably be hearing some different things from us. We were at the Mass Superintendent's Conference last week. We did speak to a couple of vendors. We will probably move forward with an internal audit of our tech department before we make decisions about moving forward the tech plan to make sure we're utilizing funds efficiently and appropriately, and we have a plan. So that might be a cost to bring someone in to do an audit, but I think the department has never been audited to a, financially, yes, but to a, where we should be as a district with the systems that we have in place, no. That's both of, not our wheelhouse. What I want to tell the committee and the public is, we have some phenomenal people in the tech department who are whiz kids in what they do. So we're going to be up and running in June, in, in, in August, and we're not going to see a delay in any type of service for staff, for parents, for kids. But we have to look at what we do systematically to make sure that we can be sustainable moving forward in the next five years, next 10 years. And we found some things that aren't critical, but could be critical within the next three to five years.
And I think it's also important that we're moving into a collaborative operation with them. We now have facilities, we now have technology, we now have transportation altogether, and we are now opening it up so that we're having weekly meetings. We're having meetings to talk about job responsibilities. We're having meetings to talk about their own individual goals and the goals for their individual departments also. And that has never taken place. It was a very top-down, and it was a very myopic view that individuals had in those certain roles. And we're approaching it like we do with teachers and when we were principals, is to make it more of a collaborative piece so that we can all be on the same page and we can move forward collectively. And I think what you're going to find is a more efficient and a better culture that's going to take place.
Mike?
Either you, I know you just got thrown into this, but maybe, can you sum up why, like, if I want cable or internet at my house, and they randomly decide to do Route 58 over, I don't pay to move telephone poles. Why are we paying? Because that's something you can sum, I just don't understand.
Yeah, the best, the best job, the best thing I could think of is because we, we individually own those wires. When we chose to do it, I'm going somewhere my memory from when Craig Finley was here, but when we chose to run our own, we didn't go with a subsidiary like Comcast or anything like that. We purchased our own wire, we purchased our spot on the pole, and as a result of that, that is now our responsibility to move it.
Is that normal? Like, is that?
That our infrastructure, just in the schools?
Yeah, yes. That's, and that, yeah.
Chris?
So I like the idea of doing an audit for utilization purposes. Can, if it's not already included, can we consider doing something around the cybersecurity side as well, just to make sure?
It'll be everything. Everything that we do as far as what we would determine as technology, and that's safety, security, that's internet safety, that's our systems that are in place from soup to nuts. I mean, we found out that some of our security systems, our ID swipes are used by the government.
Same system.
State-of-the-art. We only use 5% of that to the capacity that we can.
I will say this, and I think you should feel comfortable in that. The, the people that are in there are vastly, they know their craft very well from a technology standpoint, and I think this is the first time they're actually having some input into what they feel is the next thing we should do, or what they feel is things that we can do within our district to become more efficient. And what we're finding is, we're giving them a voice, and we're trying to do it as, we're finding that we have untapped resources that we never had at the level of maybe central office or that communication. But, yeah, that's also going to be included as to, I want a state of the state where we're at as far as technology.
And the reason I ask is municipalities, I think a lot of you follow this, but if you haven't, municipalities are oftentimes targeted just because of some of the systems they have, so a lot, on the financial services and on the business side, there's a lot of pretty significant protocols that are in place, but sometimes on the municipal side, that's where people come in, they take everything over, and then they just send you a.
I think you should also know Tyler Industries, which is the mother company of our munis, is, we just, we've already met with them twice, and we have them back for now, five more sessions, so that we can make sure that whoever had access to that doesn't, and now we can recreate in-house the overall management of it, so that we can, we can then create the roles that specific people need in carrying out of their duties. Yeah.
Part of their, their report to us was, we use 10% of, of the system. We pay for 100%, we're using 10%. So our goal this year was to look at things. This year will be an implementation of, of making sure that we're as strategic and as frugal, and we're getting the best bang for our buck in, in simple terms, as we are, and that audit should help us. We didn't think of that audit until the person left, we were down the, the conference, and different vendors were talking to us, and even as far as E-rate, we're using 50% of our E-rate. That question came to us, why? And we had no answer. So we're going to find out why. So all through the course of the, the next school year at meetings, you'll hear different bits and pieces of where we're moving in, in a positive direction. And sometimes if it, if I come to you and say, we have to drop 10 grand on this internal audit, it's probably going to save us 150 or 200,000 in the future, but it's a, it's a, it's a spend to save. And, and right now, we really need to look at ourselves, and we need to have an expert come in that's non-objective, that can give us a real answer, and that's what an audit will do. So we're looking at a couple of vendors. We're going to be at another conference this week, where we'll identify a few more vendors, and we'll be discussing with you throughout the summer. So, that's the tech piece. George had the, the news around the fiscal, the 2020 budget right now. Any questions around fiscal 2020 that I can answer before I give you some brief numbers about 2021?
Fred's got a question.
I did have following up on the audit, and I think it's a great thing to do, but I'd like to see if we can put a plan together to audit every other faction or department as well. You know, the, you know, okay, we found this in technology. You know, could there be something, you know, do facilities, do business services?
Yeah, I think we'd, I think we'd move down. I, I think it's a great idea. I will say, from now on, from this perspective, the one we know the least about is technology, so that's the one we're looking at.
Yeah, start there, but have it laying in place, and also, you know, perhaps someone incorporating in that an efficiencies expert. You know, so that way there, if we can fire on better cylinders.
That's, yeah, exactly.
I know I did have a conversation with Chad, this probably goes back a couple of years ago, and I don't know the answers that I received. The munis system that we own, can any of it be used for any of the towns? Because the towns are envious that we have munis, and that there could be some modules that could be incorporated, and I think the cost I was told was like $75,000. I don't know that to be a fact.
I don't, I think as we get into Tyler, the, the company, we'll find out more.
If you guys could keep that in mind, if there'd be something.
If we can job-share with the towns, and that, that can go for multiple areas. I mean, we used to work with the towns in technology. I mean, that is in the past, but that's something that as we grow and grow a partnership with the towns, and that's what I, I mean, Dawn and I were at a meeting tonight, which we'll talk about in a minute, about partnership, partnering with the town of Whitman, that's something we can look at. So, munis is a pretty, I was very wary, because it's very entailed, and just as you, George and I are plugging through, we're finding different things that we can do, even utilizing different systems that we, we cost out already. You know, so, once we become proficient with that, which will be sooner than later, we might have some savings in some of the systems that we already contract out for, for work orders and, and things like that. So, as we become more proficient with the systems, absolutely. And if we can expand, and we can assist Hanson or Whitman in different things and, and job-share, there's a potential there.
Before we move on, Jeff, I just want to touch on the jobs. We've all had some discussions with people about 19.2 positions, and you just reported to us as 18. I just want to put in the fact that sometimes when you eliminate a job, the person applies that you eliminated the job from applies for another job that's posted in the district. That position is still eliminated. You do not have it any longer. The advantage of hiring somebody within is, when you eliminate that, if that person goes out on unemployment for a year or two, you're paying it. If they take another job in the district, it saves that amount also.
Correct.
Because some people have said, well, you didn't eliminate, you shuffled. You know what I'm saying?
So part, one of the positions, and it's going to have an impact within the community, is we eliminated the, the person who was the assistant in facilities who ran school building use. That person was on, the, the schedule was eight to four, five days a week, and that person would sometimes work weekends and overtime. We eliminated that position. There will now be, we have one of the people in technology picking up a piece of that.
Part-time.
But it's part-time, it's not a full job, so we kicked them a couple of bucks to make sure that we have somebody manning that, because we do bring in revenue through building use, and it's a part of our community effort, but there will be hours that person will be available. And it'll be a, a call, leave a message, and that person will respond back. So the, the voicemail will be there, how you've reached so-and-so Building Use, please leave a message, yada, 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 and he'll get back to you. It's not going to be an instantaneous, hey, we need this tomorrow. We eliminated a, 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 a position there that was cost savings in this FY '20 budget. So the best we can do is that. We will try to improve our building use piece, and don't be surprised that coming, come fall, I approach you with changing our fee structure for building use. I'm looking at different schools that are our size right now and what they do for a fee structure to make sure that we're, we're competitive and not, I don't mind being, being a great resource for our folks in town, but not-for-profit folks who come in from different communities. So I'm going to come to you probably October, November with a, with a recommendation for a fee structure in our building use to make sure that we're sustained there and we're not being taken, I don't want to say taken advantage of, but we're, we're competitive with our, our buildings. We were the first with a new building in AC in our Performing Arts Center 15 years ago. That was great, but there are a lot of other communities now that have that, and either their fees are higher than ours, so we're still, we want our repeat clients, our repeat customers, but I don't, also, some of our customers are imposing themselves and disrupting our school day because they're repeat customers. Our students should come first, and that's what we'll, we'll move forward with building use in the future. So as we talk building use, that position was eliminated, we still have building use, but we don't have a person doing it. It's an offshoot in athletics. It's an offshoot in athletics, it's an offshoot in central office, and it's an offshoot in, in um operations right now, so.
Just trying to remember how we did it last time, if it came out of policy subcommittee.
It's policies. So it's policies. I haven't even looked at our policy yet, but I've asked Christine, I've asked Michelle to reach out to other communities, one being Marshfield. I was just there at an event, and I watched their structure. It's different than ours. So I wanna see the schools that are our size, how they bring people in and utilize the facility here.
And we're also trying to figure out what is the profit for it, because traditionally what we've looked at is, yes, this is the money taken in, but we haven't done a very good job of record-keeping to say, but what about the thirty-seven hours that the kid in technology had to put in over the weekend for that? So where, where, where does the, where does it all flesh out is one of the things we're really looking at this year.
We don't wanna lose money in building use, and it's with, and it's not op door, uh, money going out the door, but it's services provided, even to our summer services and, and people that are using the buildings now. We're not seeing a break even with some of the groups that come in and use over the summer because we're not efficient in how we cost out the custodial staff in hours. So there's, there's a lot of little pieces here that over the course of this year we'll, we'll bring out to, to you folks. One of the ideas we talked about building uses, are we not using our buildings well? Can we solicit some of our secondary institutions, Bridgewater State, and one being to run adult classes or an offshoot of Bridgewater State or Massasoia in our high school at night? Marshfield does that at night. They have an offshoot of Massasoia. Now, I don't know if Massasoia folks, because we're pretty local, but if you can take a class in whatever, in accounting, in room two oh one, and you live in Hanson instead of driving to the Massasoia campus, and it's a win-win for both of us, that's what we're gonna look to do. We don't wanna displace our teachers necessarily, but the building, although the high school's open twenty-four seven, we might be able to utilize it in a better way to bring in some, some revenues to offset some of the upkeep of the building and our, and, and the facilities, so.
Anyone else?
So briefly, thanks. So briefly, um, it's the challenge of, of trying to put together budget projections for twenty twenty-one, uh, when we closed nineteen on, on Friday and the governor's budget's still not signed, we're ju, I'm just giving you some rough numbers in what, what was asked around contracted services, custodial, things like that. So this isn't set in stone necessarily, um, but they're rough estimates. Um, and I can, I can send this out to you, but I didn't want, I just wanna read the numbers. So I'm looking at custodial services, SJ contracts up twenty-nine thousand for twenty twenty-one. Smart Center is zero. Uh, there is no increase for twenty twenty-one. First student increase will be forty-one six uh for twenty twenty-one. If we want to change our start times, it will be an upfront cost of four hundred and forty thousand dollars, which will be reimbursed the following year at the tune of, if that stays correct, eighty-two percent. But it'll be an upfront cost in this fiscal budget, and we won't see it until, till the, January of twenty-two, I think. Full-day K, if we wanna put into this projection, is seven hundred and ten thousand. Our, our numbers in kindergarten are up this year, so we actually added a class, but it's, it's a full-day class that we took in revenue for. Gas and electric are gonna be up about eighty-three thousand. Trash is gonna be up about seventy-five hundred. As you know now, um, we have an outstanding water issue, a water bill uh that I've sent to our attorney. Uh, both attorneys that are working on contracts, Andy Woz one and Cliff, got his name down somewhere.
The water bill was three hundred and thirty thousand, wasn't it, Jeff?
Correct. Um, the problem with the, outside of the outstanding bill, I have no idea what water costs for this school, for this building, water and sewer right now. We don't have a current number of a projection. So I'm, I'm not, I can't give you a projection, yes, Fred.
If they're telling us that the bill was off by three hundred and thirty thousand over so many years, shouldn't they be able to tell us how much water that this building is using?
The, the, the last bill was incorrect as well, so.
Okay.
So as of May, when we had the conversation, they were not able to. FY twenty was already done, so I'm waiting, we'll, I don't know, I'm guessing it's gonna be twenty thousand dollars more than we budgeted, give or take, maybe a little more, maybe, but we haven't budgeted for that.
Are they gonna replace the meters?
How do we know that their three thirty is accurate then?
We don't. And we don't, and that's, that, right now, I don't wanna go too deep.
Right, the memo on the bill said human error. The reason for the bill.
I sent, sent everything to the attorney's office for them to go through, from soup to nuts, everything that was presented to me, including the bill that we received last Monday. Great to have that built. Um, so water, we're not sure. Um, we're looking at approximately an increase of one point one million dollars in, in human, in, in salaries for next year. We're looking at an additional hundred thousand dollars in our curriculum because we're gonna add an English uh program. And I'm not, I, I'm level servicing sped for this year. Um, so our rough estimates, and that's including the four hundred and forty and the seven-ten, I'm looking at close to a two-point-five million dollar increase in the budget. If you were to take away the four forty and the seven-ten, we're looking at an increase um of one point three four nine. Again, rough numbers there. I think sped is gonna level off, I really do. My gut tells me that. However, today we did have an issue with a kid in school here today in our extended school year who assaulted a teacher, um, who might be in out of district at this point, I'm not sure. So that's, that, that's that tough number to go back, but I'm, I'm very confident in our new out-of-district coordinator and Lauren to make sure we level off our sped costs. So um I included the seven-ten and the four forty um just to have a, a general idea. I think the staffing increases are, are right ballpark between two and a half and three percent. Depending on salaries, the teacher's contract is, is two. Um, but we don't include buying things out or, or retirement benefits in that two, so we rounded up a little bit to around three. Um, so I'm looking at, again, the two, two-five is a rough number, the one-three, uh, five-zero is another rough number. Uh, doesn't include anything in insurances, it doesn't include any revenues, but it's a rough number that the committee kinda wanted to see where we're at. Um, the other challenge with staffing is we haven't finished fully hiring for this year. Um, and some of those numbers in that one, one point one are, are people and our grants. And the caution Christine put them all in the grants because we still don't know what's coming for grants. If, if a fifty thousand dollar salary is reduced, X, Y, and Z. So everything that we have here is here, and that includes our grant, grant focus.
Fred?
Uh, the one point one salaries, is that all units?
That's everything.
And is?
Every person in this district.
Does that take into consideration steps and lanes as well?
That's everything right now. That's all people. That's an increase there. So again, trying to put this together, and, and Dawn and I just were at a, a meeting for the Whitman Override Committee. I got sworn in today at two o'clock. Um, the Override Committee talked, and, and one of the things that has come out is that Whitman wants a, a budget, at least a, a fiscal twenty twenty-one budget sooner than later. Our next meeting's gonna be Oc, uh, October, August twelfth, um, so they can start talking about budgets. I said at best I can do is a level service budget with our increases. The challenge, and I brought to the committee, is that I don't want us to be level service if we're looking at moving forward, and members of the committee were, were part of that. Um, so I will present the level service piece of it. We'll also present the seven-ten and the four forty going forward. There's some discussion about non-mandated busing and things like that at the committee level, but those are the numbers that I can give Mr. Lyneum as a department head. Wanted to share them with you first, um, and they're, they are really rough estimates. I think if we move forward with the goal of doing something like this as the start of the fiscal year with a budget, it'll help us more if, if my brain is, okay, as soon as we close nineteen, we're already into the, or we close that fiscal year, we're already into the fiscal year before, it'll be helpful. It's been difficult as a department, um, central office, business, to lose a person to retirement and not replace, to lose folks in technology and not replace, and do some of the budget things right now, because we're scrambling to make things happen right now. So I, we'll have better numbers, I think, as we progress into August and September, um, as we move into our budget conversations in October, November, and for a budget presentation, depending on when the committee wants that budget presentation.
Fred?
The uh, when you present that committee uh our next budget, I know myself, I would appreciate if we could include in there the dollar amount of what we lost from last year to this year, just in level services.
Sure, absolutely.
Uh, I don't wanna see us go backwards from where we were from last year, and I understand it was fiscally impossible for us to have gone forward, but, you know, the amount of money that we were off from last year, I think should be added on, you know, to that and any numbers that were given. And then also, I'd love to see you folks work on our uh plan and show how we wanna advance, because to stay still and tread water, you know?
That was my comment at our meeting today, is that we're not, if we're going to start planning five years from now, I wanna keep moving forward. I spoke to two superintendents at the conference two weeks ago, and I said, how do you present your budget, just to help me, because I always seem to be regressing. We try to hit here and we go back, and we're comfortable, we're not comfortable, that's a bad use of words. We end up managing with this number. And the superintendent from Marshfield said, I, I proposed my level service budget, and even every five years I add a process, a program of something that the leadership team decides that they wanna move forward, and we present that as part of our budget. So every year it's moving forward. Every year there's something moving forward. Two of us in the past ten years, we've, even though we've, we've wanted to push a little forward, we've always ended up maintaining. Now, I'm not gonna say that in fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, we did bet, we did include staff. I will caveat that, that we also brought in school choice with revenue. This year, we're loo, we're, we're still maintaining revenues, but we had more students than ever go out for school choice, and they're going out earlier. They're not, I'm not losing kids in seventh and eighth grade to school choice, I'm losing kids in kindergarten, and they're staying. So we're, we've lot, we're still bringing in revenue, which is, is great for us, but the, the, the movement is different, and I'm afraid if we don't continue to move forward and we talk about the financials, we talk about what we can add in the elementary schools and the middle schools as far as program, as far as art and music and things that are outside of reading, writing, and arithmetic. We've lost foreign language in the middle. We don't even talk about it in the elementary. And if I'm gonna choice out, and I can go somewhere for free in kindergarten, and we looked at the, the, our competitor, which is Rockland right now, where they bring in school choice in K, and it's free, and they're adding to their budget, and their budget is increasing and their program is becoming better in certain areas than ours, so.
That's, I've been waiting. Um, full-day K, highest priority on the list. We are going to start seeing lost revenue for that one reason. We're gonna start losing people. Number two, state's gonna make out a mandate.
Yep.
Okay? If they make out a mandate, then we're really behind the eight ball, so we should be ahead of it. Get this project, get it implemented, beat it out before we're the last ones in the state to be such a, in a moronic situation. This should've been done years ago, and we have to really force it. Is that school choice? The more people we're gonna lose, like you said, we're gonna hit rock bottom in three or four years.
That's part of the school choice, and I think it's important, because I've heard when we talk about an override, first thing somebody says is, why don't you cut sports at high school? Okay, if I were to threaten to cut sports, and it'd be a threat, if you, if your children were gonna be freshmen, and there was a threat on the table, and your kid's a basketball player, soccer player, swimmer, and they could go to East Bridgewater, West Bridgewater, Bridgewater, Renham, Abington, Rockland, to say, all of those few, and you were nervous about that, you might enroll that child in that. And the revenue I would lose in just choice money going out the door at a five thousand to seven thousand dollar student wouldn't be worth the two hundred and eighty to three hundred thousand dollars that's in the LEA budget for athletics. Most of our athletic budget is from revolving and gates. We are one of the lowest as far as what we present. So that's, that's a, it's a, a conversation I don't wanna have to say, cut athletics because people will come to the polls and vote for an override. I want people to come to the polls and vote for an override because they want a better school system, not because they're threatened. And the fact that if I threaten, me, committee threaten, and there are parents on the fence, if they decide to go somewhere else, we're gonna lose that revenue, and they might not come back. So it's a dual-edged sword. Once we've accepted choice, I think that's a good thing for our district as far as diversity, as far as different students, and it was an, it was a revenue builder. As Mr. Cullody said, I'm concerned about the loss of choice, not to charter, people go to charter for a different reason, although they started with kindergarten, but those are fewer. I'm seeing the exit to the full-day K programs, and I'm seeing the exit to the online programs, Teca Academy. I think we can recover those, those are just conversational pieces, but I am concerned about the loss of revenues or the loss, I'm gonna be, my expenditures are gonna go up because of choice, because we're not offering things. And even this year, when we talked about our, our pink slips and our layoffs, we needed to do that, but I didn't wanna have the conversation in December because people were making choices about where they were gonna send their students to school. And if we talk into January and February about massive layoffs and massive cuts in program, and they don't come to fruition, people have already made up their mind about where their child's gonna go to school, and that mindset is there. So I'm very cautious about saying, we're gonna do this or we're gonna cut this without really doing it. Um, and one of the things, if, as the committee directs, if you make that decision, we will follow through on that. We're only gonna present to this committee what we think is, is in the best interest of the students, both in the short term and the long term. And the loss of revenue to school choice, when we started, when choice came in in fourteen here or thirteen here, EB didn't have it, Abington didn't have it, Rockland didn't have it, it was BR and West Bridgewater. Now all the other schools, the only border school is Pembroke that, that doesn't have choice at this point, but don't be shocked that they don't bring up choice at some point. Their revenues are worse than ours. My tax rate in Pembroke is, is the lowest in the area. So don't be surprised if that doesn't come, and my, my concern to the committee is that Pembroke has the state-of-the-art national champion band program, K to twelve. So if our, if they open up the choice, and we don't, we can't be competitive with our students there, we're gonna lose there too. So we have to start talking about where we wanna be in five years, not just bringing back level service. What can we add? What can we move forward in our academic program? Uh, Georgia's done a, done a wonderful job making sure we have a math program that's competitive with our, our fellow districts. We're piling in an English program. We haven't had program content in place for curriculum in the elementary since two thousand and five.
Two thousand and two was the last time for ELA.
So we've been negligent. So we need to make sure that we're competitive, and we've still done a hell of a job, making sure our kids walk across the stage. But as this, school is about kids, teachers, and people, but it's also a business, and my concern is I'm gonna lose people to the opposite business because they can get a better product.
No, that's, that's our, that's, that's my major concern is, we're not, we've, we've been walking around kindergarten way too long. Town's gonna have to wake up, realize this is what's happening, we're losing it. And then, you know, our schools were great, I can't say we're great anymore, we're pretty good, and we're just going down. And the more you go down, the more these people, you know, I'm pulling my kid out, because I've thought about it on my child. It's like, you know, we're just not getting.
We're also seeing the ripple effect in staff for the first time this year.
Yeah, well, that's the whole thing. Like you, like you mentioned, it's, it's a business, and as a business, we're not doing a good job.
So when I say I was able to bring back a teacher, because I had two resignations, and one was because he got a pink slip. So, yeah, it was a higher-priced person, but got a pink slip and said, is this position gonna be here next year? And the honest answer is, I don't know, so he took a job somewhere else. So that's the first time, and, and the ripple effect on the culture of the kid, when we talked about that, lost a teacher at Whitman Middle School who was a valuable teacher, but she decided to go to a different district that could be more sustainable. So, yeah, George is right, we're noticing an effect on the staff as well. So if we can, we can get the numbers out there, the committee that we have in Whitman met for the first time tonight, and I will report out every time we meet, because I think it's important that the entire committee hears what we do over there. But I wanna bring that out, that my concern over a five-year period, and, and the town of Whitman wants a five-year projection, we can give them a five-year projection on where we're at, even costing out salaries and things, but I was thinking about this this weekend. Five years ago, there was a real push to put a device like, like Mr. Howard has in five years ago, there was a real push to put a device like Mr. Howard has in every kid's hand and bring it home, one-to-one was the big thing. Ducksbury spent a lot of money on Max, and I remember talking to Andrew Stevenson, "How you rolling this out? How is this, every kid just getting one bang, 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 bang"? They're regressing. They don't do Max anymore, they do Chromebooks, but they're not as valued, they're not as used as everybody thought they were gonna be. So what I don't want to do is project, I want to move forward, but I don't want to project in such a way that it's gonna be deficient, we're gonna be deficient in the future. So, that's the problem in education, that things change so greatly over time, that the hot thing in education is one-to-one, this is great, and then after three years, folks, the teachers start saying, "We don't utilize this well. Hey, let's just put everything up on the board, and this isn't, the device is a note-taking device." That's why, in our brief technology plan, we'd like to put carts in every classroom, so the students can use the technology as appropriate for the teacher, and it's not a directive that they bring at home. So those are the things that we have in play, but I just wanted to share with the committee, since this was a budget time, to kind of get on my soapbox a little bit about where we want to be, and as Mr. Cullody said, we're regressing, we maintain, we do a hell of a job getting kids across the stage, we gotta do a great job. I think we've done a better job of preparing them for the world of work, not just the world of college, but the world of colleges is shifting, and I'd like us to be more prepared to get kids into the world of work with some training here as well. And when you're just maintaining and regressing, you're not bringing in programs like robotics, so a student can say, "Jeez, I really like this, I just want to go to Massachusetts and finish that up, or I want to go into the tech field." So this is what we'll be talking about in the future, moving forward in the school year as well.
Two-folded question, number one, and I'd love to see if we could be doing something vocational-wise, I know we've had the discussions, to add some VOTech-type of programs. I think that would maybe align with some of what you're saying. Number two, have they talked at all about structure, as how is an override be structured? And number three, we do have a partner in Hanson, perhaps we should invite them to our next...
I think our next school committee meeting will be in August. We're meeting on the 12th. We didn't talk about structure, we just kind of talked about goals today, where we're at, but really didn't solidify any, any structure today. Elected a chair, a vice chair, a recording secretary. Mr. Linum explained where we're at, where we really, it was an hour of just kind of feeling each other out, seeing where we're at. There were no budgets to put forth, nobody put forth any numbers. I think that'll be some meat and potatoes the next meeting, and I'll can report out on the 28th, when we have our next school committee meeting.
Did you talk about, I'm sorry, the difference between a menu option and a tier option, and the concept of residents picking and choosing which department they want to support in an override, versus a tier being just a dollar amount, and being careful with that language, right?
Correct. And the committee didn't vote on that or anything, it was just talked about the multiple different types of overrides that could happen?
No, it, I'm almost afraid to not try and take, you know, and as I've said in the past, the bull by the horns ourselves, you know, to control what we're doing for the schools. I don't want to see us, you know, pitting one department against another, but we also have a partner in Hanson, and I think that we have very specific needs. And, I mean, I don't know if they'd have two questions in the ballot, you know, this is the schools, this is the general government...
We've had no question, we have no, have had no, I have had no conversations with any select people in Hanson or any FinCom people since the last budget cycle, so. That would be, I think, as we move forward in this, depending, I think, on timeline in Whitman, those conversations in Hanson should happen sooner than later, about where they're at, and our proposed budget.
Fifteen years ago, John McEwen and I, well, it was probably 14 years ago, Michelle, this building's 14 years ago we moved in, we're sitting up in his office, and we talked about, and John would say to me, "Bob, you can't, this can't be run like a business. Education is not going to end up being a business." And I said, "Well, it can run business-like, because there are offshoots of an education such as cafeterias, and maintenance, and all of the above." But he was saying to me, "God rest his soul, the hopes education will never become a business", I said, "In 10 or 15 years, it's gonna change, because of the demographics of how people send kids to school." And school choice has turned it into a public school that has to be competitive with other public school towns, because years ago, think about this, well, I'm the oldest one on the group, so, the parents would never send a kid to another town to go to school, it was unheard of, it's just, now they're going everywhere to go to school, so the truth is, public education is gonna have to get competitive, as Dan said. It's going to have to be recognized more business-like.
And to that point, I recognize what we do with the budget in three areas, academics, athletics, and the arts. And you talked about athletics, and it's mostly self-funded, with user fees and gate fees, and our academics has suffered. And I know our enrollment is down, and I feel that some parents are choosing other schools for academics, because unfortunately, you know, and the arts as well.
Absolutely.
You know, so, when I see full day K, certainly necessary, even the busing, you know, that was a sacrifice in the start time that students have made in high school for all these years. They've come at that ungodly early hour. But you just go back to the elementary level, you know, no certified librarian still, no real technology teacher, where we've got a math curriculum coming in, a reading curriculum is coming, middle school, foreign language, world language, enrichment programs for middle school students who are in 5th or 6th grade, but their reading, you know, or their capacity is, learning is a higher level. I know students in middle school can't take all related arts, because we just don't, we have a five-day schedule, you know, they're missing out on some. I have a student who, you know, had music last year, didn't have art. We just don't have that capacity. And then at the high school, limited technology, only two tracks of learning, some is academic and, or you go right up to the AP, you know, we should be academic honors AP for all grades. A band director, wasn't that something Dr. Whitman talked about years ago? So, these are all the things, yeah.
It's all the, all the things, if we want a true inclusive education for our kids, we're missing out, and we need to, we need to do better. And I agree with you in the business piece of it, the business is our kids, we get them for 12 years, and we'd like to give them the most inclusive education, so that if you find your passion, and your passion is the flute, you should be able to take the flute in 3rd grade, and be able to do that all the way through, or if your passion is foreign language, and just because you were immersed in Spanish in 4th grade, you actually heard it, and like, wow, I really buy into that. We have students that have taken those opportunities, but we've regressed in certain areas. So we will prioritize as we move forward, and it's not all gonna be fixed in a year or two, but if we can start talking about how we move forward every year, and little by little, I felt like we moved forward 15, 16, 17, and I think we hit a roadblock last year. And we need to figure out how we don't hit that roadblock and regress back. We are, our enrollment is declining in certain areas, and it's not because of choice, it's because of parents aren't having four or five kids anymore. We will recycle those teachers. What I'd like to see is if our enrollment is down, instead of having to, because the budget says we don't replace that retirement, I can replace that retirement, because of enrollment, I can replace that with a band person or art person. This high school, and Dr. Whitman used to say, there's 1.2, or it's a 1.4 teacher for the high school of 1,200 kids. Pembroke has three full-time high, music teachers in their high school. That's where they decided to put their money. We have two art teachers doing multiple things. So if we want our kids to do that inclusive education, we need a little bit more. Doesn't mean we have to hire 14 new people, but we need a little more. Middle schools are suffering right now, and that's the area that you're hooking students in. School become, elementary school is difficult, but there's still a lot going on. You're in a one classroom, you multitask and do different things. Middle, you start to shift. If you're not getting, you know, pre-algebra in 8th grade and you're bored, nobody can, we don't have shop anymore, you can't just go hammer and nail or get that out, and you're in a PE class of 38. So, we need to do better for that, those students. We've provided the social-emotional piece of it, I think that's a step in the right direction, huge, we will see better. But it's now the other resources that we've cut, and saying, "Look, if you're not that true academic, we need something for you to do." So, we'll be preaching that too, as we move forward, and my, I, overall, I thought the meeting today at Whitman was positive. I think it's a good group of people, there's some town folk on it. There are department heads, there are select people, and FinCom people, so I thought it was positive. I'll bring back information as it, as it moves forward.
Jeff, can you get a number from Desi statewide, what school districts are off? Might help us. In other words, are all school districts off 4% in enrollment? Are they off 3%, you know what I'm saying?
So you're looking at an enrollment, trends of enrollment?
Because you talk about families having six kids and four kids, and we see that. If we had a state number of approximately where it was off, then we could compare it to where we're off, and see if that enrollment has some sort of percentage to do with what we're not offering properly, such as you mentioned Pembroke having a world-class band.
Right.
You know, we could compare the numbers if, because other than that, if you'd say we're off 5%...
Yeah, what is it relative to?
Yeah, you gotta compare apples to apples and see what other schools are off, because they've all got to be off a certain percentage, because people are having less children.
I, Mr. Linum had my heart in my throat, because he said 80 units were gonna come online this summer in Whitman, and my first thing is, if it's 80 units coming online, where are they, and how many kids are gonna be in those? Because we need to know. They won't be until next year, they're gonna be developed over the next 12 months, but those could have an impact in our schools. You know, we've cut in different areas based on enrollment, but if we add 80 units, two kids per, for Conley and Duval, our numbers shoot, you know? So those are the things that, I think the relationships we have developed, George and I, with the towns too, looking at trends and looking at enrollments are helpful. And that's why knowing Chief Grenow, Chief Thompson, when developments are coming in, they know when things are going up too, just so that we can start projecting, oh, these, all the new single-family homes are coming in, the new town homes are coming in. That's important for us to do, so we, as we move forward in our budget process as well.
Fred?
Seeing that we're not gonna be meeting before your next meeting with the Budget Override Committee, I guess, what I would hope, you would take us, again, as I said, the strategic plan, and that we utilize, I think we only get one shot, one bite at the apple, and we utilize a number that's gonna bring Whitman-Hanson back to the success level, at least, you know, listening to everyone. I don't know if you'd be looking for a motion or just a consensus, Mr. Hayes? I don't know. You know, that we give a number, if we're gonna have an override, that it's a number that's going to restore our budget. Not saying that we have to be the highest budget in the state, or even at the, gosh, if we were in the middle, we would, it would be incredible. But to bring back the services, and to be able to do the job and provide the education that the kids deserve.
So I'd like to, I'd like to put that together for the next school committee meeting, which is on the 28th. So that'll give us some time to work with our building principals as well, and I think that's the challenge right now, is everybody's in and out. We have, we're gonna be away with them on Wednesday, we're doing a dual effort there at the principals' conference, we're gonna have our retreat, we're taking them away for a couple hours on Wednesday, so we can talk about our strategic plan, because we've been able to fulfill a lot of the elements of our plan right now, so we have to develop a newer plan, and that's one of the pieces going forward. Where do we want to be in the next five years, as we put it in writing in our plan, and I'll bring that information to you folks for the 28th. We're not, I don't believe our committee's gonna set a number on the 12th, so I'd be more comfortable bringing that to the committee on the 28th.
That, one second, Chris? That was my question. I mean, I don't foresee this committee coming on the 12th and moving with any of that, I see that two or three or four meetings away, they may step it up.
Correct.
But I mean, today you had kind of an organizational meeting, it's a little premature for, to think that committee's gonna be doing it on the 12th of August, I would think.
My misinterpretation, I thought you were being asked for a budget for the...
We're being asked for a budget for fiscal '21, not even an operational or any override, we're looking at a true operational budget for fiscal '21. That's what Frank is asking from the department heads now, so that can help the committee then see what is out there, and where do we want to go. That's the task.
Chris?
Just in the spirit of communication, I know one of the things that we, I think, collectively all struggled with last year, I think we got feedback from the Hanson Select when was going in front of them and presenting the budget. So can we make sure we have, whether it's a quick letter, just making sure that they're aware of what's going on in Whitman? I'm sure they are, but formally aware of what's going on, what you're doing, and that we, you stand ready to meet with them whenever they want. I think this is what we're all, we don't want to get way ahead over here and then fall way behind on the other side, so...
I agree, I remember that feedback.
So, if we can just get something out, that would be wonderful.
Because I mean, it's gotta, for it to do any type, if have any type of motion, it's gotta have both towns.
Yeah, and it might just, just explain the process as to what you've meant, we have some rough numbers, you're happy to present, if and when they're ready.
Absolutely.
Why don't we think about on our meeting, the 28th of inviting them all? Makes sense?
Yeah, they gotta get notified.
Invite the finance committees, invite the board of selectmen, invite the whole override committee.
First-day school, man, that's a, alright.
Well, I get it. But, and remember that, that's, my evaluation has to come in that meeting as well.
Yes.
That's alright, we can do that. Yeah, and keep in mind, what do we have outstanding for that, Michelle?
Everybody has to submit their eval, hopefully by like August 10th, and then we'll have it ready for the 28th meeting.
Yeah, that's another thing that, please try to have that evaluation into Michelle, so her and I can calculate it and move forward with it. And then we'll go over it, we can go over it that night, it's, it's not as cumbersome, anywhere near as cumbersome as what we used to do.
And that, just to, for you folks, that helps me put goals together for the next year, so I need that feedback, so I can put my goals in October. And I did present at MASSS on the superintendent's evaluation, and there is a new rubric that's coming out August 15th. It should be easier and easier for school committees to follow that rubric. So they're releasing that, the presentation went well, Bob and I actually were on camera doing a few things about the process, and I got to serve on a panel with superintendents. I found that superintendents aren't really fun people, they don't really laugh a lot, I told a couple of jokes and nobody got it, so. Luckily, I was at Carla Bear on my left, she was laughing, it was great. But, the, I appreciate you folks evaluating, because there are a number of superintendents in the Commonwealth that never get an evaluation. So they, they go, they don't have any focus in how they do their goals, so I appreciate that eval, and your eval will help me develop goals for the, for the district and for myself moving forward.
It is amazing, but the numbers are on 43%, don't get it done. Right around, it was just, because the old process was ridiculous. I mean, unless you walked around superintendent for a month, you wouldn't, you couldn't answer the 24, Fred, you were involved with the 24 questions, the 26 or 8, 90% of them you couldn't even answer. It was a waste of time.
I know, Ruth was mad at me one year.
He'd be mad. Any more budget issue?
I'm good, thank you.
Any questions for the superintendent or the assistant superintendent, before I entertain motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor? Good night, everyone.
Thank you. Oh, Jeff, could you email the numbers?
Yeah, thank you.